Hi, it's Sherry Roberts and we are back with our pandemic tour of Santa Barbara City Council districts. And today we're joined by Oscar Gutierrez, who represents District Three on the West Side. Oscar, thanks so much for being with us and catching up.
Thanks for having me.
You had kind of a long-
You must be really desperate for a guest if you finally come to me, huh?
Oh, no, man, you're the swing vote. You're the fourth one. Well, the mayor won't come on with me. I don't know what that's about, but-
She's dealing with a lot, that's for sure.
Well, I know you're dealing with a lot too. So let me ask you, so we've had three really huge crises. The pandemic, basically the collapse of commerce as a result, and now the anti-racism protests and movement that's going on. They're all sort of intertwined, but what's that, this period basically been like for you?
It's been challenging, just like it has been for everyone else. But I feel like we've gotten a lot of support from the community. We're being held accountable a lot, which is good because it's finally kind of woken people up to actually reach out to us and get us to help them more.
So you're saying like there's more community engagement as a result?
Oh yeah, for sure, for sure, yeah. Ever since the start of the pandemic and now with the Black Lives Matter movement, yeah. There's people, I just in the last week, I've responded personally to over 2,000 emails on the Black Lives Matter movement specifically. And then before that, I was responding to every email having to do with the pandemic personally as well. Because these are two issues that people need to know that they're being listened to and that, you know, they warrant a response at the very least, you know? And I've been doing that and trying to distribute information and take action on what they're requesting of us. So, yeah, it's good and bad. It's obviously very stressful, but we knew that that's what this role was gonna entail. So obviously, I didn't expect something this drastic to happen, but we're here and we're doing the best we can to meet the challenge.
Let me ask you specifically about how this has been affecting Latino population. There's a lot of data and the LA Times had a big story yesterday that the death rate among Latinos from COVID is basically twice what it is for white residents. Latinos also tend to have the kinds of jobs you can't stay at home and do. They're kind of on the front line, essential workers. You know, how has it affected that community, specifically in your district?
Yeah, you know, a lot of people have reached out to me saying that it's hard for them to feel comfortable even speaking up about it. They're worried that if they try to go get help, that they'll be put on some kind of list or something like that. So there's a lot of unfortunate paranoia about receiving aid from any type of organization, even nonprofits they're wary of. And, yeah, it just comes from living in a country that they feel like they're being targeted, you know? And it's sad because it's costing people's lives unfortunately, I think.
And this is because of the changes in federal immigration policy, basically?
Yeah, you know, ever since 2016, the undocumented population in the country has been on edge, you know? And, yeah, I went around trying to let people know of places they can get free food and they're even hesitant to speak to me because they see me as a part of the government. You know, they don't even fully trust me. So it's been proven even difficult to give them aid during this time because of how much they are on edge.
Wow. The first, we're talking on Wednesday, June 10th. So not yesterday's meeting, but I guess it would have been June 2nd. The first time that there were a lot of people talking about Black Lives Matter at the council. I'm paraphrasing here, but you said something like, "It's great that people are jumping on this bandwagon, but I have to live on this bandwagon." What did you mean?
Well, so to give it a little bit of context, I did get a lot of criticism for that because without knowing the backstory, it just seemed like I just went off. So I want to apologize to everyone I upset by my conduct. So what happened was when the Black Lives Matter movement started, I was, you know, upset over what's been happening to people of color my whole life, you know? I grew up, obviously, being a person of color. And it was always something that whenever I tried to speak up about it, I was immediately told to be quiet or that I shouldn't be speaking. So whenever I would even ask my white friends to back me up, they wouldn't, you know? So there was a lot of personal issues going on that got brought up once, you know, George Floyd was murdered and the Black Lives Matter became, got into the forefront again. And all of a sudden, we, like I said earlier, I've responded to over 2,000 emails personally. And a lot of these emails, they were very disrespectful and some of them were straight out racist. Because I don't know, some of them didn't seem to know that I was a person of color and they were kind of just assuming that I've never done anything to combat racism. And it was kind of offensive, you know? And some people, when I would let them know saying, "Hey, no, I've done work to combat racism my whole life", they would just like come back and, you know, basically call me a liar. So I'm looking at these names and, you know, I'm being, I just got triggered by being lectured about racism by a lot of entitled, privileged people. And when I was given the opportunity to speak, I thought I'd just finally speak my mind and let some of these people who are kind of jumping on the bandwagon know that some of us can't get off that bandwagon, you know, we're on it for life, you know? And like I said, I realized after I got the criticism that some of those people don't look at me as a person of color. They look at me as the authority. They look at me as the problem. They look at me as the man, you know? And that was a perception that I didn't realize. And since then, I've spoken to the Black Lives Matter leaders. They let me know that they just would have appreciated me just focusing on the positive and not the negative and just give them the credit that they deserve. So I acknowledge that now and I apologize for-
So I don't, but I don't, I mean, you know, I'm just a geezer who, with comorbidities and compromised immune system was not gonna get out of his house till there's a vaccine. But be that as it may, what were you criticized for specifically?
So some of it was misinterpreted because I started off my comments by praising Black Lives Matter and saying that I support their movement. But then, when I started criticizing the bandwagon hoppers and saying, you know, where were you when I needed the support to combat racism since I've been on the council? That's when people said, you know, "This isn't about you individually. This isn't, like, don't centralize this on you. This is about the black people in the community who haven't had representatives on the council, at least for a very long time. And you just need to focus on, like, right now is their moment. It's their moment." And it shouldn't be like, "Oh, what about this race and that race?" It's not about that. Right now, it's about, it's about the black people in our community who, you know, they haven't been given the proper acknowledgement and respect. And, you know, one thing that was explained to me that I appreciate that they gave me this insight was, you know, we live in Santa Barbara, California. A lot of this part of the country is very Latin-based, very Spanish-based. You know, there's a Spanish restaurant on almost every, or a Mexican restaurant on almost every block. You know, I can go down the street and hang out with people who look like me, who speak my language, languages, you know? African-Americans in Santa Barbara don't have that. They don't have the ability to go into a black restaurant or to speak a black language or what have you. So when they gave me that perspective, you know, it obviously clicked and I said, "Okay, I get it." Like, they do need more attention right now. They do need to be acknowledged and respected and given the aid that they're needing.
Okay, all right. The Independent had, Tyler Hayden had an interesting story the other day where he went to the department with the Freedom of, the Police Department with the Freedom of Information Act request about the use of force and, you know, how much different races are on the other end of that. Latinos, 36.5% of the population, 44% use of force incidents. Blacks, 1.3% of the population, 8.7%. What did that story tell you or what's your takeaway from that about the way that Santa Barbara Police Department is operating?
Well, so, you know, I, for what it's worth, they aren't as discriminatory as other police departments, for whatever that's worth, just to say that. But obviously, there's a problem, right? Obviously, there is a big discrepancy on how people of color are being policed here. And it's something that I know that the police chief and the other officers have been trying to address, but they obviously have to do more and we have to do more to hold them accountable. And that's why the whole movement about, you know, defunding the police, it doesn't necessarily mean just, you know, don't give them any more money, but people are just asking for a reallocation of the funding to go into other services that can hopefully keep people of color from being policed like that. Because some of it is because they don't have the certain resources that other people have that cause them to do things that they wouldn't have if they had more resources at their disposal. So we're looking into that. We're studying it and seeing if we can address that issue.
So one of the things about the defund the police issue, as I understand it, is that cops are also called on to do a lot of things that aren't necessarily police work. There's social work. They're, you know, they're dealing with domestic issues, violence issues. They're dealing with addiction issues. They're dealing with, you know, people who are homeless for various reasons and that there might be, it might make more sense from a policy perspective to have people who are trained and educated in those areas doing that work. Is that what you're talking about when you talk about defunding the police?
Yeah, unfortunately, when, we're kind of led to believe that when you have a problem, you call 911. But see, I'm a little conflicted because then we're basically saying like, when you want force, only call 911? Like, what if you are dealing with somebody who's having just serious depression issues? Like, should you call 911? Like, that could trigger them to act in a negative way. And that's why a lot of people are saying like, "Hey, listen, we need to completely revamp what policing is and relook at this because we're training these people to be enforcement, you know? And, you know, when you look at the word enforcement compared to like supportive, it's two different things. And, yeah, they have been getting sensitivity training to try to help with certain situations. But again, their main focus on training is how to enforce people, how to take them down, how to arrest them, how to basically, you know, keep them in control as opposed to helping them. And, you know, you can just talk to any cop. After a while, it kind of desensitizes you a little bit. And that's the problem, you know, that people want a more compassionate response sometimes and they don't get it. And that's why we have some situations go out of control and we're looking into that.
Do you, are you getting much pushback from the Police Officers Association, from the officers themselves who are unhappy? I know there've been press conferences around the country where police officers felt they're really, you know, getting scapegoated, thrown under the bus, you know, being made responsible for the actions of other people?
Yeah, not yet. Not that I know of, at least. They haven't come and said anything to me. But I assume that they will soon. I know a few police officers and, you know, I know that they're well-meaning, but, you know, there's more that we can do to make sure that the people feel like they could be trusted and feel like they're there to help them, not to just enforce on them, you know? And that's what we really need to examine as to how we can do that.
Yeah, and one of the demands of the Black Lives Matter movement is some sort of civilian review of police, I guess specifically misconduct. But, you know, as you know, there's a huge range of how that kind of policy gets applied in various cities. Well, you know, where do you stand on that? You know, some people, it's basically you keep the discipline in the hands of the chief and the internal affairs investigation and then you just kind of look at it after the fact. You know, on the other end of it, you really have an independent agency which has its own investigators, does its own investigation. Where do you come down on that?
You know, I've always been really adamant about transparency on all levels. So I think that that's a completely reasonable thing to do is to have a citizen review board. One thing I want to make sure is that we get advised by the Black Lives Matter leaders and the black people of our community on how that citizen review board is gonna look like and operate. Because there's no point in us just doing it without checking in with them because then that'll-
You've met with them, I believe, this week, correct?
We did, yeah.
So what was your takeaway on what they would like to see happen on that?
We didn't get too much into that issue because we were focusing more on the proclamation or the resolution on declaring racism an emergency and also the funding for the Juneteenth celebration. But we're already scheduled to have another meeting with them on Friday and we're gonna continually have meetings, you know? My cohort, Megan Harmon, she said that she would want to have every issue that we have to vote on have a report on equity done as well. So the city staff would have to do a report on how this is gonna affect all the different demographics in the city, no matter what the issue is. And I think that's fair. I think that's a pretty reasonable thing to do considering how, up until now, that's never been taken into consideration. So we want to make sure we meet with the Black Lives Matter leaders to go over what the citizen review board is gonna be.
All right, one of the other, I got one more question on the police issue. Things that we've heard is, you know, why are we building a new police station at this time? Is that really a top priority? But, you know, as you know, people voted in 2017 for Measure C, which raised the sales tax. They voted to tax themselves and the big ticket item in there was a new police station. What, you know, is the council looking at, you know, not using that money for a police station or putting that on the back burner or taking Measure C money and putting it into the operating budget? Where does that all stand?
So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up because that's something that, all the emails and comments that we're fielding, I don't think a lot of people know that backstory, that this is something that's coming from the people themselves. They're asking for us to build a police station for them. They kind of make it seem like we just were like, "Oh, here, let's build something new for you" without you actually needing it. Though, the fact of the matter is, the building that they're currently in is not operable for them. First of all, they've outgrown it with, for the amount of police officers that we now currently have. And it's not that good of condition. So it's something that the people were asking for, for them. And again, they all voted for it in 2017. And this whole defund the police, as much as I am definitely for looking into that and coming out with some kind of action on it, it's a little bit of a 180 for us mentally. Because since I ran for office over two years ago now, it was something that people kept saying that we want more police. We want more police. So the last two years, I've been in this mindset of, okay, where are we gonna find this money to support our police officers? And then this last week, everyone was like, "No, no, no, no more money for the police. Now we want to defund them." And we're all kind of like, we're a little shocked because, you know, we just spent two years and I know some of the other council members spent a little more than that, trying to figure out how are we gonna support the police more? And so we're all a little jarred and we just need a little time to figure out, okay, how are we gonna defund them while keeping our residents safe? So, yeah, the building of the police station has been something that has been an issue for about 30 years now. And the police have been waiting. And so the citizens spoke and they voted for it. And now, you know, we're being asked not to do that by a certain portion of the police, of the population. And we gotta figure out something. Because I did bring it up a couple of weeks ago before, you know, George Floyd was murdered because of the pandemic. I felt like, should we postpone the building of it until we stabilize our economy? And I didn't really get too much support on that from my council members. But now, it's been brought back into the forefront and now we have to have a serious conversation about it.
Well, what are you hearing about it from your neighbors, your constituents in the district who, as you say, you know, were asking for more police when you ran for office? Have they also done a 180 or, I mean, where, are you kind of getting pushed two ways on this?
So I've only gotten a few correspondence of people in my district saying that they want to defund the police. But again, like I said before, last week, it was the opposite. It was, "We need more cops, you know, I'm tired of having my car broken into or I'm tired of people stealing things from my porches and I'm tired of not feeling safe walking around at night. Like, I want more police patrols in our neighborhood." Like, those are the things I was, I was being told. So as a public servant, as their representative, whether I agreed with it or not, I kind of had to respect it, you know? Because I'm one of the people that grew up, when you saw a cop, you didn't feel safe, you know? You felt, you felt a little nervous, you know? And that's systemic. And, but again, I'm a public servant and that's what they were asking of us at the time. But now, most of the people are asked, or I want to say, a lot of the people are asking us for the opposite. So we just kind of have to work with all sides and see what kind of compromise we can come up with.
All right. So the mayor's been taking a lot of heat. And I know before the anti-racism protest really began, when we were just talking about the economy and the pandemic, you had some concerns that she had sort of acted unilaterally in putting together this business task force. I mean, did you, what's your take on how she's been managing this whole situation?
You know, I, I love Kathy, you know? She was, I met her working at the TV station when she was a journalist and she was my neighbor and I supported her when she decided to get into politics and then obviously she supported me. But we don't agree on everything, you know? We definitely don't. And I was, I was always constantly pushing her on transparency, you know? When she first proposed limiting public comment, I was very much against it. When the, when the Black Lives Matters protest went down, you know, I was there. You know, I was with everyone when they took a knee. And to see, I actually couldn't see what was happening from where I was at the time. So I kind of didn't really know what happened until afterwards when I saw the videos online. And I was just kind of like, "Man, I really wish, one, the police weren't wearing riot gear." You know, like, I didn't think that that was very welcoming, that that didn't really represent the police in Santa Barbara that I know. So that was, that was really kind of shocking to see. Then, when I saw the videos and I saw how she tried to get in front of them, again, she was well-meaning. I 100% believe that she was there to take their demands and to let them know that she was there to help them. But she should have just waited until they were done to come up with them. And then when they asked, when they asked her to take a knee and she didn't, I mean, that was another thing where I was like, "Come on, like, read the crowd, you know? Like, know your audience." And she, it was just a mistake. I, obviously, I've had several conversations with her in the past and she's definitely in support of Black Lives Matter. But, you know, the judgment was swift and harsh on her and she's still suffering. I mean, the first meeting we had afterwards was, you know, almost three hours of her just getting publicly shamed. And then yesterday, I think it was like almost two and a half hours of her getting publicly shamed over it. And it's tough because she is an ally. She's just like me. Like, you know, we said and did things in the moment that we now realize weren't correct, but we're still here to help, you know? We never were against it. But hopefully, she can do better, just like I'm gonna do better and help out the cause and help out our citizens and hopefully they'll forgive her.
What are the chances that you'll run against her for mayor next year?
Oh, not at all.
Not thinking of it?
No, no, no.
How about any of your colleagues? The rest of them are thinking about it.
I can't speak for them. I don't know. I haven't had any conversations about that with them. But, you know, I, the people elected me to serve out this term and I'm gonna uphold that and serve it out.
All right, real quick, how much confidence do you have right now in Paul Casey?
You know, he, he's working hard, but could he be working harder? Yeah, I mean, all of us could, you know? There are things he's done that I don't appreciate, you know?
Like what?
Well, for example, like my, like my first public forum when I was running for office, I straight out said that all the managers should take a pay cut. I said that back then, you know? That was way before any of the pandemic or anything we're facing. And then my first meeting with him, I told him that to his face, that he needed to take a pay cut, you know? When it comes to, when I worked at Carp City Hall for all those years, the city manager there, when they were dealing with their economic crisis, he voluntarily took a pay cut. And that spoke volumes to me, you know? Everyone, everyone there was very impressed by him by doing that. And then, and then just recently, I'm on the Board of the Community Action Commission and the executive director, we went over her performance and we felt like she was doing a good job. So we offered her a raise and she denied it because she said, "If you're not gonna give a raise to all my employees, then I'm not gonna take one either." And that was, that was months ago. That was before the pandemic. So when I see leadership do stuff like that, it speaks to me, you know? And then here we are, I constantly have to bring it up to him, you know? And he keeps saying, "Well, you know, if that's what you guys want, then that's what I'll do." And I was like, "Why aren't you voluntarily doing it? Why do we have to force you to it?", you know?
How about, or go ahead, finish your thought.
I think, I think yesterday, I think he alluded to possibly finally coming through with it, but I'm not sure. I have to double check because I'm not sure how official that is.
All right. What about George Buell, the head of the Community Development Department? How much confidence do you have in him?
I mean, when a grand jury report comes out saying that the biggest issue is a lack of leadership and like I said in my comments last night, there's been a parade of people just never-ending just saying how, just how difficult it is to work with that department. I mean, you can't ignore that, you know?
Why isn't the city administrator making a change there?
He's gonna have to do it soon because we're about to approve the budget and we're gonna look at that pretty hard and- we're going to look at that pretty hard and decide, you know, what we're going to do about it. Because if we feel like he's not doing it, then obviously it has to come from us. So um, so yeah, we're 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 now especially being very focused on and and we're being held accountable as we should be. And we're going to be taking action, so
So you want to, you want you want somebody new in there?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't want to say that without having the input of some of my council members. But there's going to be some changes for sure.
All right. Um, let me put you on the spot a little bit. The uh, your other employer, TV Santa Barbara, uh, lost their lawsuit or their litigation uh, against the county to to guarantee funding. Um, and I know you probably take a hike on this and and uh, recuse yourself from voting on it, but uh, is the city, do you think, going to continue to finance TV Santa Barbara?
I I I don't know. That's, I think, from what I remember, the TVSB was approved for a two year um, contract with the city. So I think they have that contract until the end of twenty twenty one. Up until then, I don't know, it depends on how well we recover from this from this crisis. I know that the city has asked all the organizations that they fund to take a five percent cut. Um, and TVSB is going to honor that. They're they're going to give back five percent. Um, but yeah, it's it's just unfortunate that uh, that that whole situation didn't play out the way that I think it should have, in my opinion, in my opinion.
We should disclose that Oscar is my former director on Newsmakers TV. Um, yeah, we've got to get back in a studio. This is, I mean, this is fine, I guess, but it's not TV, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
All right. Last thing, I just want to ask you about your your guy Alex Mack.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, was voted, went to the all decade team, the NFL, uh, Atlanta Falcons lineman. You played with him at San Marco?
Yeah, we we play together. We're both centers. Um, yeah, he's he's an amazing guy, like not only is he physically talented, but he's also extremely smart. You know, he was offered to join the NFL while he was still playing for Berkeley in his junior year. And he declined it because he wanted to make sure he had a degree. Because he knows that the risk of playing football, you could get injured in your first game and then that's it, you know, so he wanted to make sure that he had a a degree to fall back on and he's super smart. He reads every day. He's always telling me about all these books he's reading and now I'm trying to keep up with him, but he's just, he's just
Did you, so did you, did you guys play like on this at the same time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was, I was a senior and he was a sophomore and I was this, I was the starting center and then as soon as he came along, like everyone forgot about me. It was over with. He he was just like faster and more agile and he he was stronger and yeah, to this day, uh, I tease him and tell him, you better make sure you tell everybody I'm the one that taught you everything you know.
What does he say about coughing up that Super Bowl in the fourth quarter, though, to
Oh, man, that was heartbreaking, man.
You were there, right? You went
No, no, I I I was here. I I actually, you know, the the only game I ever saw him play was when they played the the Forty Niners and uh, we watched Colin Kaepernick take a knee in person. So that was pretty powerful. That was in Georgia. That was in Atlanta. So that that was a, that was like a, you know, talk about a a powerful moment to see him actually do that in person was was great. But but yeah, you know, it Alex is is a great guy and a great representative of our community and and uh, yeah, I'm sure that uh, next season, he'll he'll break some more records.
If there is a next season, huh?
Yeah, true.
Well, Colin Kaepernick taking the knee is a, it's a good place. It brings us full circle. So thanks a lot for taking the time, Oscar. I appreciate it and hang in there. You got a lot on your plate right now and uh,
Do you mind if I ask you a question real quick?
Uh, go go for it. I don't expect that, you know.
Well, you you as a journalist, you you would know more about this than than I um, because of how long you've been in it, but what role would you say that local journalism has to combating racism?
Well, I think uh, calling it out, you know, when 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 you see it. And I think, you know, journalists have the basic responsibility to report the best version of the truth that they can on any given day, on any given story. And if that's uh, something that's in the story, then it ought to be in the story. And I think if you look at the people who, you know, are covering this day to day, Nick and Tyler and Delaney and Josh, um, they have, they have been doing that. You know, my role, I think, is a little different. I'm just an old retired guy, you know, typing in my pajamas, but uh, you know, what I've been trying to do, I think you're the thirty second or thirty third person that I've interviewed since the pandemic started. And really, what I'm trying to do is have newsmakers be a venue and a forum to hear all of the voices in the community to try to you know, see, see what everybody's saying and give everybody their say and and, you know, maybe figure out from there, you know, how people can can work together on all these problems that we have.
Okay. Well, you know, I've been I've been watching some of the some of the reporting since I've been on office and I would I would argue a little bit that that you all aren't being implicitly biased. And I know that's hard to hear, but there have been some reporting, you know, obviously, I I've spoken to you about some of the things you wrote about me in the past and my colleagues. And I just want to say thank you for for doing it, first of all, because I know it's not an easy job. But I'll just ask you to please be better.
Yeah, all right. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, Oscar. Take care, man. I'll talk
All right. Bye.